Come back. Thanks, Chief. I don't know where he went. Very interesting. I think pretty informative. You don't realize how big this place is if we go out and walk around it and listen to everything that they do. Glad we did it. Committee meeting. So the public started late. That was well worth the time spent. We'll start out with ordinances. Tonight we have auditors. We have Sherri's 1023, which is transfers and passed tonight. 1123 appropriation. That needs pass. We are pulling 1223 off the agenda. And we'll get it on probably hopefully for the next time. And then at the second reading, we have ordinance 823 with the Warsaw water track. And third readings is 423 vacating the alley. The third reading and the trash with the 62523. I'll be at the third reading, so those two should be passed tonight along with Sherri's.
Or so. Do we have?
We need Warsaw's passed tonight to get the points we keep here.
Oh, that's right. You know, you guys did tell me that. We put it on. So.
We have a one reading already, I believe.
Yeah. So we need 823 passed tonight. Guys did tell me that. But you spoke that day wasn't going to. For our next meeting, do we have any other ordinances? That need to be?
We will have one work with Sherri. They have approved my understanding of the design loan for that Warsaw project. I don't have the documentation yet, but then you have to do the appropriation and creating the line item for that so we can get some invoices paid. So the debt on.
Have the engineer started going up and down through there?
Yeah.
Done pouring water through the elevated tank, which will be up around you beyond that LSU tower. We'll see.
They will actually have enough to design completed, submitted on the third in case of I would say they're 80% down on the preliminary design.
They've already did appropriations for the new line item.
Did you do that for the water meter project? Or I did not see it for the Warsaw?
Maybe for the water meter. That's what I'm thinking. Water meter. Thank you.
Because we didn't have official documentation. Our hand said it was done.
My mind went to water meter. Thanks. Yeah. Sorry about that.
Any others?
Not that I know of.
We'll have the one that we pulled tonight.
Okay, Hilton Brooks, we we discuss a previous ordinance that we passed at this point since we are talking about ordinances?
Yes.
I know that I think Martin Max met with a couple of representatives from the shot in the Alps Lodge and they have approached Jim Kreis and me also about the fee that they pay for their machines at the Alps. And I think they're I want to call it an argument that they're thinking because they do a lot of charitable work that they are 501(c)(3) and should be exempt from our fees. And I don't know how the meeting went with the mayor and Max. Know that I think they were told and if they wanted to fight it, they'd have to get it in front of us. So.
Not at all. No, I don't say. So basically, so basically the to make a long to make the meeting to make a long story short. It's not administrative action. It's definitely legislative action. And I told them to if they had questions about it, that a lawyer, my our law director is better suited to answer any questions about.
Well, that's what I told them too.
And then Bob. And then as well as and then I talked to President Hiltonburg and said if they want to come to council, it's really not in my arena. It's here's the ordinance. I'm just my office is trying to do our job and I can see they have valid points, but it's a lot. So like I don't I there is nothing I can do with them administration to help them. So that's that's where my side stands completely.
I know they didn't. I'm sorry. I did get a text today as far as contributions to the community. 25,000 was donated to different groups such as Echoing Hills and 35,000 went to the foundation for community projects. So they did send that information to me, but I told them I would bring it up and see what our law director has to say about it.
I thought when we redrafted that ordinance, we took out the tax exemption from the ordinance just because you don't want to deal with who is charitable and who is not.
I remember you saying if you made that an exemption, you might as well just get rid of the entire.
And I brought all clubs give to charities and give to the community because they are required by law if they have any type of tickets or.
And like the mayor said, this is really a legislative function. You want to put that exemption in, I would suggest you just get rid of the ordinance.
I think we talked about it when we discussed the ordinance, but I know that the change in the fee didn't come from the council. That that came from the administration. I know you tried to reduce their fees.
Right. And actually, that's what when I met with.
What about that moose? We brought out you guys.
And then we yeah, and that's when here's I think they are satisfied and everyone wins. And then it's like, oh, hold on. Not everyone doesn't feel the same, which I suggest everyone get involved with the legislative process so that
I told you, I told the body to review. How much money do we bring in from the fees from our different machines in the city?
I don't want to misspeak anywhere from 15 to 20,000. So I think it's more towards 20,000. I think it's 18,000 like and everyone, the majority want to say they're tough established to have not paid that. And we were just going to send letters to say here's the legislation.
And how many, how many call them businesses, I guess, like the one in the plaza? Do we have it? It's not a an Elks, a Moose and Eagles, a F W Legion.
I believe just I believe just that.
We would now personally talk to them before the arrest.
Right. So, yeah, so they've been they made arrangements and then we just have one other club who has not paid, but everyone else is paid. So like I said, I was a I listened and you know, and there's nothing I can do further at all. It's a it's definitely a legislative process, but it's it is revenue. People do a lot of good things in the community and still have to follow the laws and do what they need to do and pay fees. So you know, it just it is what it is.
I think they're finding that some of the other area counties aren't.
Well, they did bring up Newark or looking, which there's a lot.
Talking about bring it up. Right. Yeah. And I mean, ask her to come with me.
Yeah. And to me, it's I'm willing to listen to anyone and what they have to say, but there's nothing I can do to fix it. It would have to be coming to council and and talk to council.
I were the one person I told them to talk to.
Thank you.
Any other ordinances? Housing, I received a the letter from Bob Beaumont about the zoning meeting that was held on January 31st. Bob, we don't have to act on that, do we? So did everybody get that? We're good. Anybody else have anything for housing property maintenance?
We will be having another meeting with the data in a month, probably in about a month. For the Stevens property, which is the old, I believe Roscoe Massacre Church up off of Center Street. They've remade that into a event center and very similar to what the township room is down below White Woman Street. I was at ZR2 up there. It'd be a lot easier to do that ahead of time before you sink a lot of money on something.
So there you get it.
It's not. It's not. It's not operation.
Very well. Great. It's very nice. So to do it right, I think we need to go through that process.
It's the law. It's the legislative process. If they have an issue, they can come to council, right?
Have we followed up on the other, the meeting that we had with that group?
Yes. Yeah. Mark's been up by and checked it out.
Saturday, there were probably seven vehicles. Or maybe they were playing cards.
We'll tell them to go to your house.
I got a couple of other questions. I'll wait until March. So.
Anything else for housing property maintenance?
Your housing, but in the SDP update letter. She commented the Ohio Chambers new housing task force. What does that mean?
Yeah, Abby's on newly formed Ohio Chambers Housing Task Force. Actually, I was at a meeting with Steve Stivers as the president of the Ohio Chamber about a month ago, and they formed a housing task force just to figure out how and I was in a meeting as well today is we know we have an issue. We know we have a housing issue. We have a workforce issue. We need housing so we can attract workforce and and that's kind of what that coincides.
They just focus on trying to figure out how to make this happen. Okay.
And yeah, so Abby is a part of the housing task force.
Okay, thank you.
Thing else? Infrastructure. Anybody have anything for that? Safety services? Go good with the sign. Solid new left no left turn sign with the red arrow through it. I got my turn the other day.
Today. Let's see here. I sat for about five minutes and five out of 10 turn left. They I'll have to give them. I have to give it to them. Though they did have their left turn signal. Deputy Shrock's been advised that if he needs to write any type of citations right next to the building that the county owns across from EMS is a great spot to sit. So want to remind people that arrow, the left arrow with that. That arrow, the left arrow with that line through it, that means don't turn left and. It it is just a safety, the more a car sitting there and cars are lined up and cars are turning. Squads are coming out, it's going, it's. I definitely would like to turn left there. But go up to Orange Street and turn left or go up Main Street and.
I still agree, need to send something out, we haven't already in the water bill, so we could say everyone was notified.
They?
You know, we, no, we have the little message box, which doesn't do that much, so we put it in there. You know, as we've talked about before, we can do a full page insert. You know, I think, but I think Roger was four hundred bucks or Tom, I'd give it. It'll give you one sided black and white, which would be a full page, but I think you'd want to put more information on that. You know.
Mayor, are you still in the process on the third street?
Yes, oh, it's just they're busting out work orders and then it will uh. I think third, third and Locust will happen first and then later uh in the jail, their justice center construction project. Will probably do second, so third and Locust will happen first and then it will move to second one.
About the boys working on a church in Fourth Street?
Uh actually, oh, I. It's going to happen like the next couple of weeks, they're moving scaffolding uh.
That's supposed to be very open.
What about lunch?
I didn't ask, I didn't say what year.
Yeah, it will uh soon. The next couple of weeks, it'll be open, at least the parking. The parking will probably remain closed, but there will be two way traffic, so.
We've chased banking, so. Parks and Recreation, nothing? Tiffany, Port Authority?
Yeah, uh so you do have an update sheet there in front of you. I won't go down through this line by line, I'll just kind of hit on some of the more recent things that we're working on at center last discussion. Um we need to make sure you have not that Hannah Gallagher, Hannah has been hired as our economic development specialist, we're really excited to have her. Um you know, previously, we had an economic development specialist that was paid uh through Ohio University through a grant. That grant expired the end of December, um but we really felt like it's a critical term for economic development in Kishakton County. And that we really just couldn't afford to not have someone in that position right now. Um we reached out to the Kishakton Foundation, they were very generous in helping us to not just hire someone part time, but to hire someone full time. Uh we also at the same time then hired Ashley Guthrie, Ashley is going to be our office manager, she replaces Jen. Uh Robinson, who left to take another position here locally. Um so we are really kind of in quite a transition period for our office right now, um. The exciting part about that is we're trying to figure out the most effective way, the most efficient ways for us to function in our space. Um and for weeks, we were trying to figure out how to remedy that. And we kind of figured out that it was actually our location, and so we are going to be moving, we're going to move to five thirty four Main Street. Um that space has been open for a while and it is right beside the Kishakton Collaborative. It does offer handicap accessibility, it also um gives us our own boardroom instead of a shared boardroom, so we think that that's very important. Uh so right now, we're in the process of um doing just some. Light renovations, paint, cleaning carpet, uh we should be in that new location within a month or so. I'll be working with Andrew Canadian, his team to get us uh serviced there, accessible to the public. We may have a day or two downtime, but for emails, we will no longer be on the county network. We will go be going separate from that, so we'll change email addresses as well. But we do hope that we're going to be able to do that as seamlessly as possible, so we'll keep you posted on those moves, new email addresses um and so forth. Um our funds, so we do manage nine accounts, um we were pretty excited just in the last month. We actually released seventy thousand dollars in funds from our revolving loan fund to two businesses to help with their expansions. Uh both of those businesses are here in the city and they're going to be celebrating their expansions with ribbon cuttings here soon, so. Um one is in Rosca Village, one is on Main Street. Um and then currently, we're also working with a group on County Road one twenty six, there's a four mile stretch there that needs to be paved. And um we've been working with them on private uh foundations or or private donations to go through the foundation and come to us. And so that's also a project that's a new fund for the Port Authority that we're working on. As far as the marketing Kishakton, um you know, our our current marketing efforts. Um especially in December and January are usually typically the same, that's kind of our end of year and then the ramp up to our new year. Um we are going to do some major marketing for the Port Authority and for economic development here in Kishakton when we do get our new address, our new email. Uh we didn't want to do anything too quickly as we were developing this new office, uh we are. A part of a new pilot program with Ohio Southeast, it's called Site Data Success. Um we utilize something called Zoom Prospector to really help us um sell our sites here in Kishakton, it's something that site selectors utilize. Other companies utilize and um because of the frequency, the hits that we're getting from these kinds of industrial site. We really want to make sure that those are perfect, we don't want to give them any reason at all to eliminate us from the site selection. And so that pilot program is us and I believe three other communities are part of that. We'll be doing ten weeks ses- sessions with them to really deep dive into that program and make sure that we're providing the best information possible. Um it's also going to help us with some marketing material and then also aerial photography, uh drone video, those kind of things on a couple of our sites, not just Kinsville Industrial. Um we did release a port press publication that has been distributed, I think that it was well received. Um we continue to work with our local schools, make sure that our um. Our students understand the opportunities that exist here in Kishakton and that we're connecting them with employers appropriately. As far as working with new and existing businesses, um on Friday afternoon, there was a press release with Jones Zylon. Um where they actually were a recipient of something called an inclusion grant. That's a new uh Jobs Ohio grant source that will help with the expansion efforts. Um because it's a female owned business, um it can be an other minority on businesses as well and then a distressed zip code. Uh there's a special fund there that can help. Um Tracy's project, it was a ninety thousand dollar piece of equipment and over half of that was paid for by a grant. So um that's a great success story, we in the press release actually kind of mentioned that we'd like other companies to take advantage of that. Please let us know if there's something that we can do to help um there, so that press release did go out on Friday. Um we're currently working with other numerous businesses, trying to find locations that can accommodate their growth. Um some are downtown, some are looking for other uh larger square foot spaces as well, um and so we're continuing searches on those. Um our banker's breakfast in December, it actually went very well. Um I think it kind of inspired the chamber actually to do a session with our coffee and commerce. To make sure that more people in our community understood the benefits of our revolving loan fund. Um that's going to be a program that Ashley, our office manager, is actually going to run. And so we're going to have her kind of make sure that she's also in some of our local businesses, making sure that they understand the value of that as well. Uh ideally, we would like to run through those funds so that we can go back to the other federal sources and ask for additional money, so that we can get those in our our businesses as well. Um we are going to be a part of a regional shark tub competition, um little play on shark tank. That's going to be held in Cambridge in April. Um I wanted to bring those forms out and I forgot to do that today, so I will email those to you guys so that you have them. Um businesses that have been operational for up to three years can participate in that. So we are hoping that that becomes an annual event and that we got some great Kishakton businesses that are going to participate in that. Um in regards to land development and use, um we did finish our environmental on two properties here in the city of Kishakton. Um one of those has ended up in private um ownership, the other one is Port Authority owned. Uh we are working on something called Ripple Grant for that. The big challenge on that is um we do have some oil and gas wells that needs. And so we have identified an attorney that's going to help us actually communicate better with that company to see if we can get that lease um to be removed. Um our Kishakton Ted is something that we also manage and we did receive our grant dollars from ODOT for Genesis Drive. So those are going to be in process of them being turned over to Genesis. Um and then we will be actively going after the governor's office of Appalachia dollars that were promised on that project as well, and that's another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars there. Um something that's probably taking up a a bigger portion of our time right now would be the O D O D Brownfield Program and the building demo and remediation, so. Uh the two houses actually that we looked at uh with Rusty, that's a part of those programs. Um we have nine structures total that are part of that project and right now. Um we're about halfway through, so some of those buildings have been taken down, uh probably the most notable right now is JW's. Um and so we're we're right in the mix of that grant, the other grant for Brownfield, that is on the Steel Ceilings site or the new Justice Center site. Um and we're about halfway through expending those dollars there too. Um in regards to other work, we are still working with Hammond Consulting. Uh the hotel feasibility study, that document is ready to go and it's it's taken from. Like a word document moved into marketing materials so that we can get that in the hands of some potential hotel chains. Um the housing study is in progress, Jason Hammond was here last week and met with the president of the Board of Realtors. Uh to really get a better pulse on our Kishakton market, Stephanie Conrad did a great job of answering his questions. Um and we're we're looking forward to that document being published as well. Um those type of studies are going to be essential in moving forward with a task force like that was created. Uh really what that's doing is making sure that economic development is looked at as um housing. That is certainly a barrier to economic development right now, and so task force like that are being created to help in that. Um and then the biggest, I guess, thing that we're working on would be the Appalachia Community Grant and just really making sure that we are ready for those submissions. Um it's a huge opportunity for Kishakton, so we've got stakeholders that are meeting on a regular basis. To prioritize projects, identify what those needs are and making sure that we are prepared for that. Um and then really lastly today, uh Mark and I both participated in a meeting where. Um and Max, a lot of our legislative liaisons uh came to town and we met with them. That's going to be something that we're going to do on a regular basis, so every other month they're going to come, we're all going to be in one room. We're going to have the opportunity to talk to them about Kishakton Matters, they're going to be able to talk to us about programming that's being launched on their end that might be able to help us as well. Um ideally, you know, today it was the city, the chamber, the court. Um and the county commissioners, but we would like to break that down to department head, we would like for them to be in the room. Um but also talk with them and see if we can't push some different programs at the state and federal level. Um I think that's about it for me, if you guys have questions.
Tiffany, well, I've worked with their casting theaters included, the technical assistance.
Yeah.
Is that the theater part or?
Just the theater part, yeah, so the preliminary engineering on the collaborative had already been completed, that's in the round one submission. So the technical assistance portion is that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we applied for as a community. Um that cost is about forty eight thousand dollars, that was written into that grant. So that will start as soon as the technical assistance grant awards are announced and we receive those.
Bring up by normal. All up on Tom as far as the theater, I just comment, I know my wife went to a show last. Thursday evening, I guess, in the Midland, sold out, every restaurant was sold, you know, packed. And I just still think we're missing a boat by not getting started on our theater down now, that's that's moves every time, every. Year goes by, that's money that we have given up and I'd like to see that move somehow because we're the top of that.
The nice thing about the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and and Mark backed me up on this. The way that the state presented this opportunity is if you apply for the technical assistance dollars, you're going to get those. But that was still a competitive grant process. I think every one of us that are partaking in these meetings, we all feel very, very strongly about us getting that preliminary and you know. Technical assistance dollars, um so that preliminary engineering on the theater portion should be able to start pretty quickly. Um the the other funds, and it gets a little complicated, there's procured planners that have been put out there as well. That's going to be a little bit of a process, but we're going to be able to tap into them as well for other functions throughout this grant. So that preliminary engineering should start, if it went anything like the preliminary engineering that we did on the front portion, the collaborative. I don't think it'll take very long and we'll have a nice published document to help us then move forward with. Not only the Appalachia Community Grant, we don't want to put all of our eggs in one basket, we're going to go after additional funding as well.
And sooner we can get that.
Great.
Open the better.
Yeah.
And uh talking to gentlemen about. Shaver's and the plastics company evidently. Um if we can get anything together in the next two or three weeks, they're looking at a place in Logan, Ohio, so we're missing the whole opportunity. And I know it's gone off.
He was talking a little bit through email, um. Uh we are very sad, unfortunately, it looks like the type of building that he is looking for. It it just doesn't exist here right now, it's not available, we've shown them multiple buildings and it's really, really hopeful that the one in December was the one that was going to hit the mark. Um I I really felt like it was the one that was the closest to it, um Shay's right, we're grasping at straws right now. Um and timeline wise, I don't know that we're going to be able to build the type of building that he is moving in the timeline that he's wanting.
I just know it's gone off for a couple of years, probably, the the spec building. I know you had talked about that at one time and I noticed in your. Your report here, you're working on a uh application to build a spec building.
We had to transition our initial thought process, we were we were going after the cousin property and then realized that we were. Actually had letter of intents with another company here in Kishakton that we should not be competing against really for that type of development. And so we had to withdraw and the other development is moving forward on the cousin property, um so we had to shift to Paper Mill Road. And Paper Mill Road has challenges that we're trying to overcome, so that's where I'm afraid that that timeline doesn't work. I have asked if two things, one, if a building becomes available, make sure that it's in front of Shay immediately. Um I have reached out to Ohio Southeast to kind of put feelers out there, like is there? Anything that I'm missing, I will tell you, we went through our current inventory here. We just don't have inventory that looks like that right now, I really, really wish that we did. If by chance you have a building that maybe we haven't considered, please let me know. And also be happy to jump on a call and see if, you know, there's something else out here that I'm missing, but. We have worked on it for a while, I am quite sad that we haven't been able to come up with something that works, but. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Anything else? Thanks.
Oh, let's see, where do we start? Tiffany said everything I was going to say, so. No, not really, uh I I printed the, I printed the paper out for uh Scenic Ohio Works, uh it's at the Ohio History Center. Friday, April seventh, two to four. Uh tomorrow at my C V B meeting, I'm actually going to hand these out because basically every. Organization within the city is also represented there. Uh by the beginning of, I think it's like mid, mid March, I. Need to email them representation, so if you want to go as a representation, if you want to go as just a. A participant, it seems like a great time, it basically the award is April seventh. Uh. From two to four at the Ohio History Center and it basically the award gives special recognition to communities, organizations, individuals who want to improve. And protect Ohio's visual qualities, distinctive culture, historical character, so. Uh I'm not sure who nominated us for this, but they did and and we received the award with with the. Chagrin Falls, uh Lakeside, Millersburg and Yellow Spring, so it should be a good time, they promised me a good keynote speaker, so. You're all invited and let me know if you want to go as a representation. Uh and it seems like a a good, it's on a Friday, so you can start the weekend early in Columbus. Uh and just want you guys to be aware of that. Like Tiffany mentioned, we met with the the Governor's uh Central Ohio Liaison today, her name's Kathleen Dryly. Uh as well as other uh old state elected officials' representation. Uh got to see the community room at the new. Uh let's see here, what's it called, it's a Shopton Health District. Uh it's a beautiful facility, I can't wait to see the rest of it. And it was, it was nice, uh if you know at some point. And it was, it was nice, uh, if you know, at some point I'm sure Tiffany can invite whoever from council that wants to be there, right? So uh, wanted to update you, whole park is got a giant mud hole around the swings and the and the uh slide because we cut it out for our rubber mulch. So if you drive by them, they like, it is not, the mud is not a feature. It's just waiting on mulch, so like I was, I I would be up there digging it up if I was a kid right now. Like stopping from putting that mulch in, but that's what's going there. Uh, Tiffany also mentioned Appalachian Steering Committee. Uh, we've been meeting bi-weekly, I think Councilman Barcraft was there. Were you there this past meeting?
No, it wasn't.
Or the one, you've been to one or two, I don't know, it's early in the morning sometimes, so foggy early. Uh, and I invite council, I have no objection at all for council to be there. See what's kinda going on with with the county and the city and and the port and uh, you know, we have uh, CDC of Ohio and different people coming to pitch and and talk to us and uh, we actually had uh, O H M was there this past week. That was the proposal that I had like a year ago, that I proposed for a plan for downtown and they're actually I can't say that yet, so uh, that's it on that, uh, see I'm learning almost. Uh, wanted to since we're under a tornado watch or warning, uh, wanted to remind the public that our city of shockton.com website, we have the code red system that you can sign up for for any emergencies. Uh, you can click on that link and sign up. I wanna remind people to clean up vehicles, uh, right now we are on vehicles that have been sitting for a long period of time. Uh, trash, furniture, we have furniture bags at City Hall. Uh, Kimball will not pick up any furniture unless it is completely wrapped. Uh, and we're actually spoiled because most places you live, you have to call and tell them like, hey, I have this piece of furniture, they actually charging. Uh, we are blessed, you can just put it in a bag and they will come pick it up without any issues. But if you don't put it in a bag, then Roger calls me and says there's a couch here on Chestnut Street that needs to be moved. So if the public can help me employ calls from Roger. Uh, and Mark can do other things other than case people around about wrapping their mattresses up, uh, it would be greatly appreciated, so.
How long do we uh, start grace period when they are told to wrap their couches or mattresses?
It should be a week because it should be gone next.
To be gone next week. They don't wrap them.
Right, and typically, they typically they do pretty well if you, you know, go, hey, wrap this. Uh, I don't know why, it's it's not that complicated at all. Yeah, we started to and and we will do more of just cleaning it up, like if you're not going to do it, uh, that would be a fifteen day, basically by ordinance, grass is seven days, trash, junk, nuisances for fifteen days, so you buy ordinance, uh, you know, if it's some, if something as simple as a chair, wrap it up and and give it.
I know there was uh, two properties, or three in the alley between third and fourth, and I know Mark got on it right away.
It's all, and those are all out of town.
Yeah, mattresses are still there, matter of fact, I think they added two more on up in the property against the garage.
Yeah.
Then the other one with the building at the corner of uh Mulberry in that same alley, there's an old couch and they've been there.
That's where those are probably going to get cleaned up by.
I've already talked to the landlords and they said they were gonna clean it up and have it, so we'll.
Right, so when that happens, that's when we send our people out, they clean it up and then and then that gets put on the tat, and that gets put on the taxes, so um. I wanna say hello to D ship upstairs, I know they're probably upstairs cuddling, living their recliners, but great to have you all here and like I said, I I enjoy the the fire department and everything they do on, but the people they have and it's always this clean in here, so they're not trying to impress you, it's always just put together. Thank you chief and and our I T guy Brennan's laying the corner. Really enjoy my trips to the firehouse. Uh, and I think that's all I have right now. Thank you. And unless you have questions, I know Roger's full of questions, you good?
Not for you.
Awesome, Langgrill, Max. I don't think I got anybody else got any questions? The mayor? Max?
We're pretty well covered, I really, we did have a meeting this morning, one thing we're investigating that we're probably going to do is through Verizon connects is put uh on tracking devices, but that's how.
Yeah.
C V S devices in our uh, trucks and mobile equipment, uh, a lot of good things can do with technology now, it'll even get down to whether it can tell whether a truck's idling or not, so they're predicting at least a twenty percent drop in fuel costs by going to this, so uh, it's about uh eighteen ninety-five per vehicle a month. It's less than twenty dollars, they do all the entire installation and that's a lifetime warranty on the parts, so on nails they come.
With one on the mayor's vehicle? I told him, I actually, I want one so I can see where to go, yeah.
The one I'm worried about is that.
No one has access to where I'm going, but I need to know where.
I think the truck may be too old. What technology and does it start to parbrate wrong, so we'll have to see how that works and then that's twelve ninety-five for our heavy equipment like our leaf machine street sweeper and back truck, that kind of stuff, so uh, we'll probably do that, I'll keep you up to date on that. Uh, water lines are pretty much completed in the cemetery, that's kind of been a collaboration between the cemetery guys and a couple of days distribution guys. And uh, apparently I hear it's went very well. Uh, Mark mentioned Hall Park, it's a fortified day delivery on the river. We're not get it coming until we know that there's gonna be some dry days, cause it comes in two thousand pound uh uh, bulk bags. All right, I need somebody going up there and setting the bags and stringing it all over the place, so. Uh, we are buying uh while we're hot hogged for the street department as well, that'll allow us to keep hot mix overnight. Uh, we waste a, you can say a lot, but you always waste some of your hot mix, especially when you have to drive further to Holmesville. By the time you get it back here, you get off that last ton, ton and a half starting to get pretty cool and set up and uh, so this, you can actually keep it on all night long, it's got a gas burner. I think it's well worth the money we're gonna use on that, so. Still, we've been working on the Warsaw project there, thanks to Mark mentions. Do you have any questions?
I do.
Uh, and the second one.
Well, I guess, so here we are, we're supplying water again.
Yes.
Okay, that's a big stretch. So are we planning for the future with breakdowns and leaks?
A little bit of what we put in, I have a copy of the contract here, have I else read it's uh no, there's actually a maintenance fee in there, that will be a separate line item. Uh, much like you pay uh, like as your quarter you're paying right now for your storm sewer that will be going to was it five, I think? Couple years, uh, for maintenance. Uh, when that fund gets up to a fifty?
Fifty, I don't ever see it getting that, it's a maintenance fee per user. Uh, it's fixed for the first three years and after that, we get a three percent annual escalation clause. But it's it's listed as maintaining or improving the connection progress would be adding from the booster station, we'll say that's proposed that sheets is marking all the way to Warsaw, so we can use that fee there to help offset some of those costs.
So as we supply water to these other communities, are we still thinking about growing the city? I mean, population, we want to get to our fifteen thousand, because we're supplying water, people and we're just standing pat being gross. Thank you. Then, that's, okay, yes, so we are thinking about it.
And that project, this, I mean, we'll vote, it's a contract, we'll sign a contract for to go to the E P A and the funding agencies, but it's a funding does not occur with that project. We're not going to put our
Right.
jeopardize our residents and by the same token. You know, the the residents of Warsaw can only stand, they're an L M I community as well. So if that does, you know, if it's a yeah, if Congressman or anybody are listening, it's very important that we get funding for that.
I'm sure they are, they're walking for that.
I know they are. I mean, it, it really is, I mean, they're they're up against it.
It really is, it's really just how the, how everything falls with funding. Uh, make that decision.
I understand that, because I think we've talked about that a lot, but I just, you know, we have opportunities to grow the city and we're passing up opportunities. We'll uh to get to that magic number, we don't have that far to go, and you look at the number wise. Uh, I know it's not a real happy topic to talk about, but we've gotta be thinking about it.
But there will be one something.
Third order of annex.
I know.
Max, is that, I'll get the contract that goes, was ordinance eight twenty-three?
That's the new one, is that lowers, yes.
I was just wondering if everybody has seen it at best.
They probably have not been at charity, but that actually just, we had a meeting with Warsaw, we got done at four o'clock. I've made a copy here, there's two copies here, I emailed everybody, one for Amy to her file.
You want more copies on the other one up there?
Yeah.
Make a pastor.
I got the other ones back.
They have the unrevised.
That is the revised, I revised it from our four o'clock meeting.
Yeah, basically that was a change, but as you know, we took over a large uh, amount of monetary assets when we took over it. Plus like, yeah, which will hurt carry them. Not a bus will have to worry about, unless it was something major that really blew up a fire, you know, we took over about eight hundred thousand dollars. If it was maybe that now, the Warsaw's credit, uh, they did substantially increase their rates when we first started talking about this. I don't know.
Their their rates now are equivalent to our inside rates, they pass.
They're building some money up in there. Or just, I guess, for lack of their term.
Yeah, they're starting, I think they went into effect late last year. But they did pass, they were in the two to three dollars a thousand range now, they're equivalent to ours, so that was one pretty hefty increase.
Anybody else? Property cub, Mr. Shrock, I know that uh Roger's gonna come after you.
I think I sent him, I've heard back right away.
Yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it, Mark.
Appreciate it, I know you built a bunch of cars.
There's still a lot of them out there.
I don't tire.
One tire. I could, but bigger sort of brought up, brought up the idea of having our own impound lot. Uh, I don't know if that's something we could consider down in the, where the city health department area used to be, you know, it's fenced in back there.
Hmm, it's pretty old back in there, but I don't know.
I think Sher is gonna have one of them. Around jail, the new jail.
Okay. Uh, speaking of tires, he brought up a good, a good topic, I actually met with Alex Nelson, the litter prevention, new litter prevention. Uh, person, and we need a tire collection. That, uh, there are a lot of tires and people ask where do we take them? Well, you leave them at the shop, if you get your tires put on and you pay the you know, one, five dollars a tire and they take them. Uh, there are like four tires for every man, woman, child, like in this town, like, I swear, like, if you look and it's, and we need to do something, but that's what I recommend, if you have some, take them to your nearest tire shop and they will take them, but I'm working on a tire take back day, with that said, in the past, what's happened is people come in from out of the county and bring in a whole trailer load of tires, so we have to figure out a way uh, to know, you know, where the tires are just limit, but we need to definitely, you know, the more you look, there are tires everywhere, so. It's uh, something that we're definitely working on.
I have a question for Mark. Um, I met him a couple of weeks ago, um, about the uh Cemetery Street between Oak Hill Cemetery and Lucas Street. I was wondering if you took a look at that? I've looked at that. Okay, it's a mess. It's a mess, yeah, it is, two properties there, probably there is. Getting back to what Roger brought up, you know, I'm gonna give people fifteen days, okay, if you don't do it in fifteen days.
I wonder the guy that had all those cars. There's back to back properties there, then it's corner.
Oh, uh, so the one property is, uh, we're closer on that because a local attorney is handling that estate, the one with eight cars, so we will work together with them to figure that out, so that's being discussed right now.
Well, there's not many cars there, because there's, there's a boat, two boats, three trailers, trailers, but they're all down.
It's a vertical junkyard is what it is. Six in Locust also. Cars out back, I think some of those are gone now, there's still a bunch of trash. Um, if you have Cemetery Street, yeah. Definitely, I know Marcus.
I've been like that before.
Bob did prosecute the base for us last week. You wanna talk about that, Bob?
Uh, Mr. Cranlet, what's that property's address, do you remember?
That's a bank and a sign. He is. Yeah, B C had that property sold. Um, the new owner, I have their phone number. Um, and he had started the process of cleaning up, I think he did remove it.
He removed the trailer.
Uh, and we informed him the rest needed to be cleaned up, he was found guilty and and sentenced. And I told him that he didn't get it cleaned up or get the property sold, we're going after him again.
And the, I know the potential new owner and that was rumored to close when
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, I will reach out as soon, probably Wednesday to the new owner. And we will start the process all over again, but I, you know, I even said that we could like possibly take with city funds, take that bank and south lawn house down. Like I would almost vow that we would do that because it's been sitting there long enough, so it's, I don't know, and the other house is not much better, so it will be on to the next owner base.
That, and the owner is more responsible than this.
What uh, probably off topic, I need to ask anyway, what what do we do with our habitual non-profit taxpayers? That year in and year out do not pay their profit tax in amounts to forty, fifty thousand or we, can we do anything with them?
Property tax, they're delinquent when they're forwarded to my office and we do tax foreclosure routinely. Um, I don't know of anybody that that would be that delinquent, because typically after they're delinquent for one year, they get sent to our office.
And usually, if if we're working on a property, that's something that that process can get expedited if we know, like the property on Locust Street, we can, if there's it's an estate or if it's a unusual circumstance, we can speed that process, so.
So when you go through that list of delinquent taxpayers and you see the same name ten or twelve times, you start adding it up. You know, that's thirty to fifty thousand dollars or whatever the city could have and what.
It's up to the.
Not all of it.
Kind of treasurer asks to.
Right, and I know that's where, all right, thanks, Bob.
And we need to go back, Sher has a question on that.
On the, on the contract for Warsaw, it says in addition to the city inside water rate and the Warsaw debt reduction fee, each village customer, village customer will pay five dollars per month as the initial Warsaw maintenance fee. But it also states that the money's collected for this fee is gonna go into the village dedicated water fund. This is all saying that this stuff is gonna go to the village. This is all saying that this stuff is going to go to the village. And not, I thought today from the discussion today, that's going to come to the city.
It's all coming to the city, but you know.
It's not how it's where, it says in here, it'll go to the village dedicated water fund.
With the city.
They will not have a water fund after.
It'll be the.
Activation.
I just wanna make sure that's correct because.
There will be no.
Because this is the collection where the Warsaw will be temporarily paused whenever the damage to pay, whenever the village maybe they're just calling it the village. It's not necessarily the village of Warsaw, because when you were referred to village of Warsaw, so.
What I would suggest is if you authorize Max to sign that contract, Max, make sure that change is made before you.
And then.
Or if you want, you could authorize him to sign the contract with the, that clause amended.
Or does Warsaw have any debt? Because it says we'd be responsible for any debt they currently.
Uh, they survive. They have zero water fund debt. There's a, one of the pages in our states, uh, alright.
Questions right there, real quick.
Good.
Probably page about four, I'm guessing somewhere near.
That's where I'm at.
Hey, we'll adjourn here. Couple minutes, anybody else to run upstairs?
About another.